So I'm in call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on September twenty-six, two thousand and nineteen. If you're able, can you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a published agenda for this evening. Is there any additions?
I'd move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as written.
Second.
It's been moving second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And we have an agenda. And first up on our agenda, under public recognitions and presentation, is a public recognition of the Wynn Community of Basketball. So the city of Lacey water system contains nearly four thousand fire hydrants. And while our water technicians perform regular inspections and repairs on hydrants each year to keep up them fully functional, our Wynn program participants are vital in helping us accomplish some of our painting goals. Painting hydrants is a valuable service because it helps protect them from corrosion, it increases their visibility, and it improves the appearance of our community. This year, the Community of Basketball Wind Group painted forty hydrants in their McAllister Park subdivision. And the Water Department staff would like to extend their sincere thanks to Coach Howard and all the participants. They were a pleasure to work with, and they hope they choose to paint more hydrants in the future. So Coach, can you please come on?
So the, the Community of Basketball has helped to make our community a better place for all of its residents by participating in the City of Lacey Work Involvement Now, the Wynn Community Youth Program. So on behalf of the entire Lacey City Council, I extend our deepest appreciation for your help with painting the fire hydrants. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you.
You want to say a few words here?
Sure. Thank you, guys. First off, my name is Terrence Howard. I'm glad to be in front of you guys today. This is an opportunity for our community and our youth to have a voice. Community basketball was erected as a community project originally from juvenile justice, trying to find a way to get to the youth before they start making felonious decisions. Basketball was going to be the tool. Community of basketball is the purpose. We want to bring kids together, build a community, strengthen them through the sport of basketball, and get them to understand teamwork, commitment, and fun. What better way to learn life lessons than to have fun while learning them? So the biggest part of community basketball is the community. We need you guys. We need your support. We need your voices. We need your support with the kids as far as keeping them into understanding hard work and patience and perseverance. So just keep continuing to support these kids. Make sure that they stick with it. You know, some kids are used to quitting or not actually, excuse me, they're not applying themselves in the way that we can support them to get them to supply them, I mean to reach their goals. So thank you, guys, for giving us the opportunity. The Wynn Project helps us teach them about giving back, how to get together with a group, and really enjoy each other while giving back. So thank you, guys, for the opportunity. You will see us out here doing more things, and it's a pleasure. So.
Thank you so much, Coach. So next on our agenda is a public comment, and we have a few people who've signed up. The first is Bill DiPoto. Can you please state your full name and give us your address and keep your comments about three minutes?
Thank you. My name is Bill DiPoto. I live in Jubilee on Marywood Drive, four-six-four-one Marywood. Mayor Ryder, Deputy Mayor Pratt, members of the council. Good evening. My name is Bill DiPoto. I live in Jubilee, where I'm the PCO of Lacey Precinct forty-seven. I'm also the founder and co-chair of Democrats of Jubilee, but I'm not representing that group tonight because I believe the concerns you're about to hear transcend partisan boundaries. My Jubilee neighbors are very concerned that their voices are not being heard. There are two of them here tonight, here to speak to you about a copse of environmental significant trees in particular, and the environment in general. My neighbors, John and Margaret Green, appropriately named, headed a community campaign to challenge the efforts of a builder seeking a permit to thin the snuggle of trees overlooking the sound for the creation of nicer lot views. They'll tell you how the builder's selfish reasons morphed into a permit to, quote, "improved forest health." John and Margaret will also tell you about the many cogent and annotated comments submitted by concerned citizens to preserve this important habitat, biomass, and carbon sink. They'll tell you about how the permit review process is slanted through the imposition of cheap pro-developmer permit application fees and steep appeal fees. And they'll tell you that even after a hundred thirty-nine of a hundred forty comments received opposed the permit, the permit was issued nonetheless. Members of the council, I heard someone brag that Lacey touches the sound. Well, it touches the sound in Jubilee. I trust you will hear out my neighbors and do what you can to keep Lacey a tree city, USA. I yield the rest of my time to John and Margaret Green. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next up is John.
Good evening. I have copies of my testimony and also a timeline of how this whole thing played out. So if you pass that around, please. My name is John Green, forty-seven thirty-two, Orkus Court, Lacey, Washington, a community of Jubilee. This is in reference to case number eighteen dash four thirty-six for selective thin for creation of tract A Eagles Bluff. There's a trail serving Jubilee, Edgewater, and even Silverhawk communities, which goes for two miles, culminating in a beautiful diverse forest on the Bluff of Puget Sound. The forest is dearly loved by the residents of our communities. Since February, a process has been ongoing to plan a project to create views of Mount Rainier and Puget Sound for the homes at Eagles Bluff above our beloved forest. On July twenty-third, we were notified as stakeholders that a permit application for selective thinning or view creation was available for comment. The comment period ended August the sixth. Because City Ordinance Number fourteen point three-two entitled Tree and Vegetation Protection Ordinance prohibits tree removal for views and which, in our opinion, had several other violations, we felt confident that the application would be turned down. We were told by the city that one hundred and forty comments had been received, most against the proposal. On August twenty-second, we were shocked to find that the application had been approved. On August twenty-seventh, we went, came down to City Hall with a FOIA request and reviewed the file. We found at reviewing all the comments that only one was not opposed to the tree cutting, and he was sort of torn between the two, whether to cut or not cut. We also found a letter written to City Council Arborist, Washington Forest Consultants, Incorporated, WFCI, advising that the application, quote, "exceeds the ordinance allowance for tree removal," unquote, and requested a recommendation on the application, taking into account, quote, "taking into account overall long-term health of the stand," unquote. On August fourteenth, WFCI submitted a letter outlining forest health as the reason for tree removal. While the applicant paid a fee of three hundred and sixteen dollars to apply for land clearing, to appeal this decision would have required a fee, a filing fee of twenty-one hundred seventy-nine dollars plus pay a hearings examiner hired by the city. To further appeal to council would cost another six hundred and thirty-two dollars to gain access to our elected officials. We chose not to appeal because of the owner's fees involved. We feel this process stifles citizen dissent and can jade city staff, knowing that the only person with enough money to appeal is the developer. It does not support the intent or the spirit of city ordinances. It is probably too late to stop this project for us, but hopefully improvements in the process will help other citizens in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Margaret.
As John has stated, we are beyond the window for appeal, appealing this decision, but it is important we share our experience with the permit approval process. New to Lacey, I'm encouraged by the city's comp plan and its emphasis on parks, trails, and green space, and protections for trees and wildlife. The ordinances support these goals and guide staff, developers, and homeowners in vetting projects. The issue here is that the experience has put a crack in my confidence that the system works to support the city's goals. I have lost faith in the process. The original application's stated purpose was for view creation. I and many of the Hawks Prairie Jubilee community are disappointed that this permit application was not rejected in the pre-submission meetings and application review, and then brought back with the new objective. I would like to emphasize that staff has been helpful and responsive to most inquiries and has incorporated many of our concerns into the decision. As future owners of the property, Jubilee and Hawks Prairie residents' biggest concern voiced to us was that the project would get out of control and go unmonitored with disastrous results. For that reason, we continually ask for clarification of decision details. It is clear that the staff is now on it. The importance, however, is to ensure monitoring is actually focused on tree and forest health and not on creating views. The list of purposes and permit criteria in the Ordinance 1432 A through N emphasizes the environmental benefits of urban forests, stating that trees and ground cover have significant environmental and quality life benefits, and encourages protection of wildlife and habitat. Creation of views is not a listed purpose. I do believe this was a well-intentioned attempt to be helpful and assist this developer achieve his goals and to move the project forward, but we lost sight that the project purposes, purpose was originally stated is not within the scope or spirit of the law. I cannot close without a statement about this beautiful area, which currently serves as habitat for birds, amphibians, and mammals. In nine months, we have seen 93 species of birds along the trail and the sound at its base. The list is amazing in its diversity. In my opinion, the less we impact this habitat, the better, which supports the comp plan goal to conserve wildlife habitat. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Teresa Mernick.
Hello?
Please state your name and your address, and limit your comments about three minutes.
Okay. I'm Teresa Merrick, and my address is 7625 Kodiak Avenue, Northeast Lacey. I want to first mention that I understand that the reasons for homelessness are varied and complex. We all saw a negative impact in downtown Olympia due to the tent city downtown last winter. At the May 21 Lacey City Council meeting, you heard residents of Lacey speak pretty passionately about not wanting homeless camps in Lacey, yet plans for a camp on Marvin Road and on Carpenter Road have been made without further public input. The residents of nearby neighborhoods have many questions that have not all been answered. I want to urge you to shelve the plans to open these camps. I understand one is supposed to open by the 30th until you have a chance to meet with the neighbors and answer all of our questions. I would also like to hear from you alternative solutions to homelessness that do not involve outdoor camps. I think they're not a very good solution to homelessness. I would like you to work, look to other communities to see what has worked in those communities, and I would like to see you appeal to the state and federal governments to help you with finding solutions and funding. I would also like to see the city attorney file an appeal to Martin versus Boise, since it is really impossible to comply with. As soon as the Marvin Road camp and the Carpenter Road camp fill up, you will be out of compliance again. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. City manager, can you let the audience know about our next steps?
I do. There's been a lot of discussion about the, what we call Main Street, which is in northeast Lacey, and the intention there was to create a permanent, a permitted parking area for, to deal with homelessness. Granted, there is a lot of concern, questions from northeast Lacey residents is really all for the community should be concerned about that. We were going to have an informational meeting. I've been talking to representatives of the neighborhood. We'd like to have a meeting sometime by mid-October, and we're trying to finalize that. We will announce that and make that a public meeting and have that at Lacey City Council. So at this point, we will not activate that site until we have the informational meeting. However, we do have a parking standard that we do need to enforce, and those parking exceptions will actually be finalized tomorrow, and I'll be asking the Lacey Police Department to actually enforce those. Now, that means, it means it may, will be, those permitted parking areas will be in our back parking lot, but we need to do something to at least inform or at least enforce the uniform standard that we have in the city of Lacey. So we'll be reaching out, obviously, to the community to, for that informational meeting. So look for something probably, again, the first, second week of October, and I'll be in contact with some of the representatives on phone that I've spoken with, too.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
If I may. Some in the community have had some confusion that there's, you know, there's a homeless situation that we're dealing with, and there's also a new parking ordinance that we recently enacted, and that, those are, those are somewhat separate issues.
Thank you. Well, thank you for, yep.
I'd one more thing. There is also going to be some community outreach about the proposed camp for homeless on Carpenter Road near Martin Way. The Regional Housing Council now has a communications committee, and public outreach is one of their, their first missions on that. So as soon as we get some, you know, a finite proposal to take to the public, then there are plans to do just that.
Do you know when you might, obviously, this, this council has not seen a proposal for, for that site yet either. Do you know a timeline for that process?
It's got to be soon. I'm, I'm thinking probably within the next few weeks.
Then we'll start to see the proposed.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Clarification. The, the space that Councilmember Cox is speaking of is not in Lacey, but it's near Lacey.
Thank you. Next up, Kate Berry. Yes? Would she like?
Hello. My name is Kate Berry. We live at 8870 Shepherd Way, Northeast Lacey, Washington, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak to council tonight. I know all of you have heard from me. I hope my communications with you have been respectful, but I would like to say that this has been the homeless situation, the, the overnight parking, the camp that's being proposed for Carpenter. These are all things that have concerned me greatly and the members of our community, and I'd like to thank the city manager for being so patient and kind to hear me out on several occasions. There, there are a few things that I'm grateful to hear that the brakes have been pumped here and that we have an opportunity to really get into the, the issues that cause us concern in our community. I've spoken to many of the people who operate small businesses in Hawks Prairie, and of course, one of them being a drugstore, that they were concerned that not only would we end up with RVs parking in the areas where commercial enterprises are trying to conduct business, but that there could be an increase in crime in, in that area and cause a great deal of damage to our small businesses that we, as a community, support. And I would hope that we can, we can think carefully about what we're going to do for all of the constituencies, totally have compassion for people who find themselves in difficult circumstances, but I think that, that we have to have a very well-thought-out and reasoned approach to how we proceed with this. The overnight parking area, as you all know, caused me great concern about the safety and security of our homes in the area and of our persons as well. We have thousands of small children in our community, and we just want to be safe where we live, and we think that that's actually a, a good idea for everybody. Today, the Thurston County Sheriff issued a press release with the information about registered sex offenders, and I know that I brought that up at the last time that I spoke to all of you, and that is a real concern. Right now, we have the opportunity to see where people who are registered sex offenders are living and then to take whatever precautions we feel are necessary to ensure the safety of our families. But the Thurston County Sheriff, this is a number that blows me away, that there are 802 registered sex offenders in Thurston County. Of those, 74 of them are, as they call it, transient with no home associated with the offender. That's scary, that people would be registered sex offenders and we don't know where they are. Of those 74 that have no home, nine of them are Level III sex offenders, and it blows me away that our court system would allow, sorry, I'll get upset about this, Level III sex offenders and we don't know where they are. So our concern with the overnight parking permitted area in our community was that, how will we know if those nine Level III registered sex offenders are there? We wouldn't. So you can't notify us, so we can't take the precautions we might think are necessary. My last statement is that after the 12 hours would be over and those RVs would be moved and come into our communities and say, for instance, park in front of my home. I have children who are, are taking the bus. There are seven small children that take the bus right next to my home, and as part of my role in the community, I watch those little children every morning when they're standing there waiting for the bus because I care about them getting to school safely. If one of those Level III sex offenders is in that RV parked in front of my home within that four-hour window that they're allowed to park, I'm very concerned about the safety of those children. So I want us to take into consideration all the things that matter here, not just the fact that we have to comply with some judge's idea of how we need to address homelessness in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. I, I'm sure we'll see you at the, the public meeting.
Yes, you will.
And hopefully, we'll be able to answer a lot of those questions for you then.
Thank you very much.
Next up, Jewel Hembrath? Is it Jewel? Yeah.
I'm going to switch this mic up. I'm a little taller. My name's Jewel Hembrath. I'm a resident of Hawks Prairie at 8819 Corona Court, Northeast Lacey. Bringing my concerns, I've been kind of watching some of the talks that have been going on online about the homeless encampment that we're proposing upon the Main Street. Wasn't even quite sure it was called Main Street until tonight, but I wanted to bring a couple of things to point. I work for a state agency that assists people with food assistance and cash assistance, things like this, things that we're talking about for the homeless people, things that they may need. So we're proposing to move them to an area in northeast Lacey when the closest community service office to them is in Tumwater. So I'm just wondering why we're moving them farther away from the benefits that they might need. That would be one question that I'd like to see answered. The other concern that I have is, I'm sure many of you are aware of the homeless encampment there at the roundabout near the Meridian Bridge that was taken apart about six, eight months ago, where we had about eight heaping garbage trucks full of garbage that was brought out of the woods. If you think they're not going to leave trash behind, and we're talking about not, yeah, we're going to give them a trash can, well, that's fantastic, but is that going to stop them from using the facilities outdoors? They're not going to all use the porta-potties. It's just not going to happen. I don't know how many of you have visited downtown Olympia when they had the homeless shelters, or they moved the people in the tent cities around, or how many of you have been to Seattle and to tent cities there and the mess it's left behind? 90 grand isn't going to cover this. Where's the money going to come from after the $90,000 that's given to the city? Who's paying for it next? That's my main question. Are taxes going up? So I have to pay more money for somebody to get free housing in their RV where they can leave whatever they want behind. But we're moving them farther away from benefits. Nobody's going to be monitoring them. Security guard coming in three times a day isn't going to take care of business. Do we have lights out there? But we're talking about putting up security cameras. Where's the electricity coming from? Who's piping that in? Any copper wiring going in there? Because we all know what copper wiring does. Just saying. So I'm really concerned about this. I'm glad to hear that, that we're kind of putting a stall on some of this. I can tell you right now that the community service office social workers aren't going out there to talk to these people at the homeless encampment. So if we're not getting them the assistance that they need by getting them into the offices with DSHS, we're just moving them farther away instead of getting them closer to the benefits that they may need. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council on the lines? Please. Can you please state your full name and your address and keep your comments about three minutes?
My name is Peggy Mattson. My address is 3338 Arrowroot Street, Southeast. I have been attending the meetings and reading all of the documentation that is provided by both the Planning Commission and the City Council. I attended the work session recently, and I would like either Mr. Spence or Deputy Ryder to address tonight to help us understand the difference between the stability site, which I understand that the cost is going to be $500,000 for that, the stability site, the proposed emergency housing shelter, and the, this emergency RV parking. What are the differences between those and who is sponsoring them and who is paying for them? This lady just addressed a $90,000 cost for cleanup, but I see in the budget that we have proposed $120,000 for on-call cleanup services. And in addition, there's the $500,000 that the city is going to be contributing toward the stability site. Can I get an answer? Is that the, the county-sponsored site at Martin and Carpenter?
Correct. So the stabilization side, I don't think there's an official name. That is the one that's preliminarily at $500,000. It's a regional effort. That's the one that Councilmember Cox was referring to, that it's in its early stages. That is envisioned as a 40-unit in terms of potentially tents and then going to tiny homes. That's still being worked out, and the costs are still being, so that is distinctive from the permitted parking area, which we're trying to deal with vehicles or RVs or any recreational vehicles that are illegally parked in either a city parking lot or a city roadway.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Another comment on that, it seems to me that we have the cart before the horse. I've seen the recommendations, which have gone through multiple iterations by the Planning Commission for a change to the ordinance, but as of the work session that I attended, which was just, what, 10 days ago, two weeks ago, the ordinance itself had not yet been voted upon and changed. So I have a question and would like to hear it addressed tonight. How is it that without a change to the ordinance, which addresses the issue of low-barrier versus high-barrier sites, and that will address the issue of sex offenders? By the way, the state of Washington has a 51% unregistered sex offender rate of compliance. So, and if you're looking at 802 in the county of Thurston, assume, you have to make some assumptions there, even if you assume only a quarter of those are in Lacey, that's, that's a, there's double that is the reality of the sex offenders. So we had many discussions about low-barrier versus high-barrier sites, and I don't hear that being addressed with this emergency RV parking, yet that was very much a recommendation by the Planning Commission for that to be addressed. So I would like the council or Mr. Spence to address that tonight for us.
Can you do that, and then we're, we're out. Can you do that and then we're, we're out of time?
So two different authorities. The parking ordinance gives the authority to establish permitted parking areas. And in the policy, everyone will be given a background check. The references you're talking to about low barrier and other additional requirements are related to the emergency housing ordinance, which the Planning Commission's been working on for the last six months. That has not actually gone through a finalized process yet. Council got the first briefing at that work session. They'll be taking that up in October. So two distinct issues. And I think that's part of the reason where there's some confusion. There's been a three-part process. There's been a camping ordinance, there's been emergency housing ordinance, and there's been a parking ordinance. And all have distinct issues and goals that they're trying to solve, but they have different authorities that all have some relationship to homelessness. So again, I get why this has been a confusing issue. I could tell you, your local government is trying to do the right thing, trying to be responsive and trying to react to this issue. And so I appreciate your patience. I hope there'll be more information. We can provide you the informational meeting in October. I think that will be a good first step. But as we advance through this, this is why we have, we need more community dialogue on this issue. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council? Please state your full name.
Hi, my name's Crystal Burningham, 8857 Windham Court. My family and I had just recently moved here and I had come to the work session meeting, I believe it was Thursday, September 19th. There were some issues that were alarming to me. Mayor, you had suggested that perhaps moving the ordinance and letting churches and church parking lots house the homeless population. And I wanted to share a grievance that I have with that, that we don't want to further span and sprawl out the homeless population, especially when people can't have a say with private property with churches. And there's cleanup, safety. If anything happens on those sites, who's held responsible? Parishioners wanting to go there and worship in safety? I'm all for helping somebody who wants to become self-reliant. But when they want to use taxpayers' money to enable themselves and further enable themselves with learned helplessness, I can't get on board with that. So please revisit that thought and I want you to know that I am in opposition for letting there be homeless encampments or housing on church properties because I don't believe that churches understand the ramifications that they have up to two years or indefinitely that the homeless can be there and it would be very hard to get them out. And there was also a case where it took up to nine months to get, to get rid of one of the encampments. So I don't think that the church parishioners and the well-going church members understand what they're taking on when you present to them, hey, do you want to have, house the homeless for an emergency? Because they don't understand how long that emergency can be. Another issue that I had was Deputy Mayor Cynthia Pratt had said that she was concerned about background checks and didn't feel that that might be fair. And she quote-unquote said, I don't want them to get iced. And so when I went up to ask for clarification after the meeting, I had asked her if she could please clarify what that meant. And she said, well, it's not fair for people like Jose, who are here quote-unquote pulling carrots, to, I can't remember the exact wording she said after that, but from what I remember it was to not have a place to go when they're here just trying to make a living. And I just said, I feel that that's not very, a good way to use taxpayers' money to house people that are here illegally and that we need to stick with ordinance on having background checks and fingerprinting. If they can't prove an ID, they have to be fingerprinted. We need to know who they are, what, if they're wanted in any other jurisdictions, if they're predators, pedophiles, sex offenders, or are harm to our community. And something that I have been marinating for a while and I, and I wanted clarification from Councilmember Pratt. I had asked her, when she had said if I was, if I was so concerned for my safety that I should go back and live with my people, meaning the people on base. And I asked you twice, I asked you twice, do you mean that me, who just moved here, that is with the military and bought a house and gave you my taxpayer money, that you want me living here in your community as a military member? And you had said yes. So this is very concerning to me because I had let you know that this is not what the people want. Every forum says this is not what the people want and you are not listening to what we are saying. So I'm asking the government to please be good stewards of your office and of our money and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council? One at a time. Please state your full name.
David Mueller, 4708 Orkuss Court, Northeast in Jubilee. I guess I'm speaking just for myself. I think I read the consultant's report for the proposed developers' cutting of tree tops, cutting for clearance for views. I read the proposed, I think the council asked for citizen input for this decision. And the consultant's report, I thought, was pretty good. It had three options. I think the option that was referenced was not the one that they recommended going with that would damage, damage the entire tree, tree area. But I guess I'm, again, speaking for myself, I'm more of a property rights guy. If the developer thinks that the property is worth more with a little bit more of a view, I think that's the right, he has that, he or she has that right to make that decision, to make that call and that we should proceed. And by the way, we could probably all use a little bit more view of the beautiful, beautiful Puget Sound and this might very well provide that. I have no idea. Anyway, just, just my input. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else? Sure.
Some of you may know me, some of you may not. I am actually Peel Box Boy. That's how I identify myself as a humor, that I live in my car. Now, I may not look like I live in my car, but I do. To give you a little bit of my insight in under three minutes. The parking lot back there, I was told that I had to park there, you know, not you guys, but I was like, I don't feel like I should be affiliated with something that I feel like I'm trying to get out of. I used to have a residence on 5001 College Street. I lost my job at State Farm. Everything went downhill since they closed down the Tacoma building. Finding a job has been hectic, except for Charlie Safari. They're awesome, just not enough to pay the bills. It's happening. What happened to Seattle is literally we're at the origin of how it happened. So whatever the council decides to do to prevent that from happening, happening here, has to be decided soon. They're already staying in the lot. They're already approached my car, asking if I wanted to buy some black. I don't know what that means. But they came to me now. Now you see them on every corner. We have someone driving 80 miles per hour stealing mail. That doesn't happen in Lacey. It doesn't. So you guys are the good guys, they're the good guys as well, but stalling has to stop. And this is someone living in their car saying that you have to take this serious before the businesses leave and then the town just goes, done. And that's all.
Thank you as always for your comments.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yep.
Young man, I encourage you to let the world know out that you're looking for hire because with your, with your ability to, your ability to speak, put words together and, and present, I, I think somebody out there will want to hire you.
Thank you. Is anyone else saying done? Next, and thank you all for your comments. We really appreciate it. Next up is proclamations. Our first proclamation is the Walk to School Month.
City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas making bicycle and pedestrian safety improvements a priority can help protect the life and safety of Lacey's youth, whereas the City of Lacey is working to add bike lanes, trails, sidewalks, and improve street crossings to better connect our neighborhoods and provide safer routes to school and...
Whereas a lack of physical activity plays a leading role in rising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children and...
Whereas regularly walking and biking to school can be fun and increase students' readiness to learn and...
Whereas driving students to school in private vehicles contributes to traffic congestion and air pollution and...
Whereas an important role for parents and caregivers is to teach children how to safely walk and bike on our streets. And whereas in October, community leaders, parents, and children from around the world will join together for walk-to-school events to increase awareness about the health and environmental benefits of walking and biking to schools.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, to hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 as Walk to School Month in the City of Lacey and encourage all citizens of the City of Lacey to promote the safety and health of children this month and throughout the year by supporting pedestrian and bicycle improvements, modeling safe pedestrian and bicycle behaviors, and practicing an active lifestyle. Signed, myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, September 26, 2019. And Carrie Wilson, and John?
John Sussman from North Thurston Public Schools Transportation. And with me is Carrie Wilson from InterCity Transit. And we just have a few comments. Carrie is going to go first.
So I'm with InterCity Transit's Walk and Roll Program and it's a youth education program that educates and encourages youth to get around by walking, biking, and taking public transit. So this school year, we are once again partnering with North Thurston Public Schools to hold Walk and Roll to school events at Mountain View Elementary School. We also hope to encourage more schools to join us this year. These events improve safety and reduce traffic congestion around the school by encouraging families to consider walking and biking instead of driving in their car. Last school year, Mountain View held four Walk and Roll events with a combined participation of over 500 students and families. We would like to recognize the support that the events get from the Lacey Police Department and the Lacey Fire Department and of course, the City of Lacey. It's really special to have firemen and police officers attend events. The students and families really enjoy it. We invite you to come out and participate in one of the events, especially October 9th, which is when Mountain View will be celebrating International Walk to School Day. And I believe Olympic View will be celebrating on the 2nd. All right, and I will hand it over to John.
Other partners that help us with the Walk to School Month are the Thurston County Health Department and the Thurston Safe Kids Coalition are behind motivating us to walk to school. Other schools in the district do this and I participate myself in Lydia Hawk Walk to School Day in October. We, we wanted to just say thank you to the City of Lacey Public Works Department for the incredible work that's being done. And one only needs to look at College Street, 22nd and College, already the half that's been done over by Mountain View is a great improvement. One goes down further south to Kamatchan Middle School and looks at the start of the Superteet. And the roadway, the bike lanes, the sidewalk, the access points, the improvements that have been done to the medians in the roadway are just fabulous for bikers, walkers, and folks, and me, and the school bus for that, that much. It's such an improvement and such a beautiful job. So Mr. Eggers, wonderful job. We also want to shout out to our School Resource Officers Chief, Officer Newcomb, Officer Barts, and Officer Howard, who are providing outstanding public service and safety to all the schools and North Thurston Public Schools. We have 22 schools altogether and these resource officers are responding and helping and assisting and guiding and teaching on a daily basis. We can't thank you enough for all you all do to make it just a wonderful city and a safe place to walk and bike. And thank you so much for the proclamation.
Thank you.
Good question. So what, because I'm planning on participating, what time do we meet, the 16th and...
The 9th.
And on 16th Avenue and wherever, on the 9th?
Is this for Mountain View?
Yes.
Yes. My neighborhood.
Is there an invitation to you with the information? Because there are several invitations for you to...
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks. So thank you, John, and I thank you for what you're doing. I've, I think several of us have participated in the past and I've loved walking to school with the kids. Such, it's so great seeing their, seeing their happy faces as you, as you walk to school. And you're right, the improvements that we're doing on College Street makes a big difference. One of the first things I realized when I was walking kids to school a couple of years ago is how, how narrow the sidewalks were there. And I'm like, oh my goodness. And so it's great to see that, that, that work's being done. So thank you again. So next up, another proclamation for National Voter Registration Day.
City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas registering to vote empowers eligible citizens to exercise their right to vote on Election Day and...
Whereas the City of Lacey is committed to strengthening democracy by encouraging voter registration and increasing participation in all elections and...
Whereas civic-minded people and organizations have collaborated to establish September 24, 2019 as National Voter Registration Day and...
Whereas the goal of 2019 National Voter Registration Day is to create awareness of elections and motivate eligible citizens to vote in the coming months and...
Whereas the strength of our democracy depends on the willingness of our citizens to participate by choosing the people who will lead us and by voicing their opinions on important matters that will come before the voters on Election Day.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, to hereby recognize September 24, 2019 as National Voter Registration Day. And I encourage all eligible citizens, or city residents, to register to vote and recognize and celebrate this day. And I know that day just passed, but we have Mary Hall here.
Thank you very much for recognizing National Voter Registration Day. You know, as you said, voting is really the cornerstone of our democracy, but you can't vote if you're not registered. I'm pleased to say that currently in Thurston County, we have over 185,000 registered voters. In Lacey, you have over 30,000 registered voters. You're catching up really fast to the City of Olympia, I must say. You know, and voter registration now has never been easier. Just this year, same-day voter registration went into effect, so you don't have to worry about procrastinating anymore. If you're not registered, it's Election Day, you can come right into my office up until 8:00 PM, register to vote, get a ballot, and vote on that same day. So we've totally, totally eliminated one of those barriers to voting. The other exciting law that went into effect this year is 16 and 17-year-olds, when they get their driver's license or at school, can pre-register. So when they become 18, they automatically receive a ballot for the next election that they're eligible for. So exciting new laws. This is the sixth time we've celebrated National Voter Registration Day in Thurston County. And our goal this year is to register 1,500 voters this week. We've had voter registration drives going on in the schools and colleges. We actually make it a little competitive with the Auditor Cup where colleges compete against each other, high schools compete against each other. And it's amazing, they're really getting competitive, which is awesome. And your efforts today really help us increase awareness of how important voting is. So anybody in the audience or, do you film this?
Yep, it's Facebook Live.
Watching remotely? It's very, very easy to register to vote. You can go online to votewa.gov. You can even register on your phone. As long as you have a driver's license, we'll use that signature to compare the signature on your ballot declaration. So, so I want to thank you for this proclamation. But I also want to thank you for another thing. I'm sure you remember back in early August, there was somebody who went on a little rampage in your parking lot, damaging police cars. And they also intentionally took their SUV and ran over our ballot drop box, actually high-centered the SUV on our ballot drop box. Public Works was amazing. Thank you so much. You just moved the box to a different parking lot, picked it back up. These are such herky boxes, it wasn't even dented, but the car was totaled. So voters can rest assured your ballot is safe in those boxes. But your response and your cooperation and helping us out is really, really appreciated for this and all you do partnering with us. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. And I know you didn't mention it, but you were very instrumental in getting those laws passed. So thank you for what you did to help make it easier for people to register to vote in Washington. Not... it easier for people to register to vote in Washington, not only Thurston County, but in Washington. And your, your testimony and your hard work on those laws, I think, were instrumental in getting them passed. So thank you for what you do as well.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.[611.54][611.54][applause] Maybe we could recognize the Auditor Cup winner of this inaugural season.
Yeah, we'd love to hear the winners when you, when you get that information.
Okay, I will let you know, because Timberland is in the running, so we do have Lacey, we do have Lacey schools, so I'll let you know.
Great, thank you. So, next up is ordinances. Ordinance 1552 relating to 2019 budget amendments. Troy.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. Good evening, councils. As the mayor mentioned, tonight you are going to consider an ordinance that will amend our 2019 budget. There's a number of reasons why we may amend the budget mid-year. There may be a change in council activities or priorities, activity levels that we didn't quite anticipate in the budget, as well as grant awards and opportunities that we've taken advantage of. Throughout the year, staff provides the finance committee updates. That helps us maintain the integrity of the budget, as well as provide timely information. You have the full list, the full detailed list of the proposed amendments as Exhibit A of the ordinance, and you do have a summary of the more significant proposed amendments in the staff report, and I would like to take a moment to highlight a few of those. There is a $2.5 million amendment for your continued support of Lacey veterans. There is $500,000 related to the tenant improvements for the federal Veteran Affairs Outstation, as well as $2 million for the enhancement of our own Lacey Hub. That is a grant award through the state budget. There is $223,000 requested for police department salaries and benefits. This is a part of our restructure that will help us enhance public safety services here in Lacey. You have a $216,000 request to upgrade the city's building permit system. This is really to replace a 20-year-old system that will really bring us into the current century, where developers and, and those can actually apply for their permits online, as well as schedule their inspections online. There is a $500,000 transfer to the building fund. This is to help fund the Trail Amenity Project. There is $50,000 requested for the new museum project. You might remember the $1 million Heritage Grant Award. This is really to start that project. The majority of this project will be, or the design will be completed in 2020. There is $300,000 in the Parks and Open Space Budget. You might remember during a joint meeting with the Parks Board, the city council placed a high priority on the development of a master plan for the Great Cuyahoga Park. We do have amendments in the Stormwater M&amp;O Fund, Maintenance Operation Fund. The state was finally able to fund the Stormwater, Streetsweeper Grant for the Stormwater Fund. We've been waiting a couple of years for that funding, so it's finally here. So we need to amend the budget to make that purchase of the sweeper, as well as provide monies for salary and, and benefits to operate that sweeper. You do have a number of capital requests within the Water and Wastewater Fund, and we do have the full list in the staff report. I won't go through them one by one. So that's a quick summary of what's in the amendments. Again, you have the full details. I hope we've had a chance to review that. The staff recommendation is that you do adopt the proposed ordinance, which will amend the 2019 budget.
I'd move to adopt ordinance 1552, amending the 2019 budget.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember?
Yes. Lot of items here, and it, it says in the, in the disadvantages that generally budget adjustments must be, must use cash reserves to compensate for expenditures that may exceed budget estimates by the end of the budget year. Could you elaborate on that a little bit, how we pacing and what the net is for our budget, please?
Sure. As we amend the budget, we've, we obviously pass a budget amendment, a balanced budget each year, so there aren't those revenues available. So we do have to look to reserves, and we have to make sure that we have adequate reserves in order to adopt these amendments. So I assure the council that there are adequate reserves. You are going to be looking at those reserves next week at your, at your work session, but there is adequate funding for each and every one of these amendments.
And I'd remind ourselves that we have, have achieved a top bond rating, which a high factor of that is, is excellent reserves. So if we are to have amendments that would look at those reserves, that confirms what you just said, that we're in a good shape to be able to look at those.
That's correct, thank you.
I would also like to just state that 20 minutes after this vote is taken, there will probably be a need for another change. The numbers and the working documents are exactly that, so.
Yeah, certainly appreciate it. It is an organic document, and we
And it comes with the ever-growing city, you know. We're, we're not a small city anymore. We're, we're now considered a medium to large-sized city, and with growing pains and, you know, numbers that fluctuate.
Yep. And I, I don't think you stated, stated this, but the, the $2.5 million for the Lacey Veteran Services Hub is going to be fully reimbursed. That was a, a grant we received, $2 million grant for, and then the tenant improvements will be reimbursed as well. So that is a really big win for our veterans. We're really proud of all the work that's happening at our, our Veteran Services Hub, where we have over 50 organizations working under, under one roof. It's to provide services to veterans and their families. It's a, it's a model that is becoming extremely popular through military communities throughout the United States. And I will be given an update on our, our Veteran Services Hub at our National League of Cities Conference in November. Other military communities are very interested. They've heard us go through this process, and obviously the success that we're receiving and the recognition from the federal government and the state government and on how important it is. We have other communities wanting to replicate that, and we have a couple of communities right here in Washington who've come down to take a look at the hub. And so we're really excited about that, and it's, it's great that we have that asset here for our veterans and their families.
So, I want to thank you for mentioning those big pending reimbursements.
Deputy Mayor?
So, to just, on top of that, one of the organizations that do help with the Veterans Affairs is obviously, they help vets with homelessness finding housing. So that is one thing. But I did want to point out, because I probably won't bring it up in my committee report, is that the Joint Animal Services, the city is paying 45,000 to update the information technology, and that's because of public records requirements. The Jazzcom is, has very outdated ways to pull out public records, and so that's an important element there.
Great. Thank you for that comment. Is there any other comments? It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 1552, amending the 2019 budget. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed that motion carries? So, next up, under Mayor's Report, and we've had some conversation lately with, with the public when it comes to comments that can be made during a council meeting, whether it can, if it's items on the agenda or not on the agenda. These are rules that have been in place before, I think, anyone on this council was around. And so I've had some conversations, wondering if we need to take a look at that process to be able to allow, to have public comment on items on the agenda when allowed by law. And I would, I would request that this council take that up, and if we can go to a work session and, and talk about why that, that sort of rule was put in place by, by former council, and if we should take a look at amending that to allow comment on items on the agenda when available, when, when allowed by law. Councilmember?
I would very much be in favor of doing that. I've, I've been uncomfortable with that policy since before I joined council, and it was one of the things I intended to bring up this year. So, thank you for that.
I know the deputy mayor and myself, when we were first elected, we were, we wondered the same. Why was this in place? And we heard a, you know, a, a good explanation at the time, but I, you know, that rule was put in place, it wasn't this council, and so I think this council should weigh in on it, and I'd be happy that we do that. Councilmember Hearn?
I look forward to that discussion. From my 12 years on the council, I'll weigh in, since you asked.
Senior member of this council, yes?
Old guy.[1233.41][1233.41][laughter] In a nutshell, it seems to me, from my experience, that, yes, we should allow time for items that are coming forth, but the advantage of withholding a dramatic back and forth on the night of a vote really drains the room of unnecessary drama, and that's one issue. So I'm absolutely for ample comment and discussion and plenty of deliberation. Work sessions, council, you know, I think, you know, processes are, are important, should be very slow. But that's the reason, in my opinion, to avoid unnecessary drama on the night of a vote. That's my opinion. I look forward to discussing it further.
Yeah. Well, thank you for your input on that. I look forward to having this conversation with this council, and hopefully we can take a look at, and we'll, we'll make a decision going there. There's pros and cons, as
Yes.
Councilmember Hearn has, has stated, and I think we should, should talk about those and, and maybe look to change that rule. So we'll direct staff to add that to a future work session? Thank you. Next up is Boards Committee's, Boards Commission's committee reports. I'm up first, but I do not have a report. Deputy Mayor?
So the Joint Animal Services Commission, Jazzcom, met yesterday, September 25th. There were three main items discussed. I guess I did put in here, the City of Lacey is the financial agent for Jazzcom, and Jacob Ewing, the Animal Services Liaison for the city, mentioned that the city is testing the servers to add animal services primarily in order to be able to handle public records. We had a long discussion on a proposed budget. A few significant budget items included the possible jurisdictional annual charge. So jurisdictions could see an increase in their, what they are charged into for Jazzcom. They're hoping to set aside 100,000 of the budget for a feasibility study for either a remodel or new facility. The facility is way below standards and needs major updates. And they really need two or a minimum, at least one more animal care tech to clean kennels and care for the stray dogs, to get them ready for adoption. And right now, there are three FTEs which allow two staff to be working seven days per week on a rotation basis to help care for animals. And in order to meet national standards, it takes 15 minutes per animal to clean and disinfect the kennel. Based on a national animal care formula, the current capacity for care is an average of 64 animals per day. And on average, since 2018, Jazzcom houses an average of 92 animals per day. So it definitely exceeds the capacity for care formula by 28 animals. And if you're looking seasonally at capacity, in the summer, the animals per day, it's over the capacity of 48 animals. And so they don't get out of their kennel for up to 21 hours a day, and that is really a hardship on the animals. It stresses them out, it makes them hard for adoptions and so forth. And then lastly, Tumwater Public Works has agreed to pick up large dead animals, since field staff can't handle large animals, such as deer and cows, et cetera, and especially if it's just one field staff available. And Tumwater tends to have the most large dead animals that need to be picked up and disposed of. But potentially, we could be asked if we, our public works might be interested in helping. So with that, that ends my Jazzcom report. LOT, Clean Water Alliance did not meet, but I did have a report about, that I represent LOT at the Department of Enterprise Services Steering Committee for the Capital Lake, the Shoots Estuary Watershed Long-Term Management Planning Effort of their EIS process. And the board approved that I sign a letter that will be used for the DES to ask the legislature for additional funding for the EIS. And the letter basically states that representatives LOT, Olympia, Tumwater, Thurston County, the port, and in a separate letter, the Squawson Tribe support Phase II, the implementation plan for whatever the alternative has been selected, and will provide approximately 50,000 per jurisdiction if the cost is divided up equally. So basically, this shows, one, support for the completion of the EIS, and two, it shows we are willing to put in financial support for the process, which we hope will encourage the legislature to come up with 2.4 million in their supplemental budget. And this is really critical, just as a background, because we'll be implement, impacted for whatever alternative is chosen because of our connection with our MPDES permit, which then affects our ratepayers. So it's pretty critical that we encourage a way to come up with a final decision on that, and hopefully it will not increase our rates to our ratepayers. That's what we're trying to avoid. That's my report.
Deputy Mayor, there was some conversation that they want local jurisdictions to help in the financing of the next phase.
Well, that's what that is.
And so are they, what I'm confused is, are they, are they asking the City of Lacey directly?
Not Lacey, LOT.
Just LOT, Olympia, and Tumwater, or just LOT?
LOT, Olympia, Tumwater, Thurston County, the port, and Squawson Tribe.
Okay. Thank you so much for that clarification.
And only because, I mean, it's, because I'm on Lacy's, and I'm representing, the representative of LOT, but LOT is, is standing on its own kind of merit as itself. And I'm just representing the whole, all of the jurisdictions that are in law.
For LOT, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification.
Because it doesn't affect Lacey, per se, other than it affects our ratepayers.
Right, yes. So, thank you for that clarification. I heard talk going around, I just wanted to make sure if Lacy's in that or not.
Yeah.
Councilmember Cox?
Alrighty. Thurston Thrives Coordinating Council met on September 16th. To my surprise, I thought the meeting had been canceled, so I wasn't there. But I, I did get a report that major actions included adopting governance documents for the Coordinating Council to help better define what the Coordinating Council's role is within Thurston Thrives. They also had a preview of Thurston County Prosecutor John Toonheim's Thurston County Hope Project, which he gave, I believe it was the 22nd, out at the South Sound, South Bugey Sound Community College. I attended that along with the deputy mayor, and it was excellent.
Yeah, it was.
The community results that these projects are getting is, is awesome. And then there was also a presentation from the Moore Wright Group, and this is a group that works with large stores such as Walmart and others, to collect things that have been returned to the, to the stores that can't really be resold. And so the stores donate them, and then this group turns around and stores them. And when low-income people come and say, gosh, you know, I really need a microwave, or I really need this, then they're able to give it to them for little to nothing. So they are looking for support to try to find a bigger warehouse space, because they want to be as big an operation as they can possibly be on that. Let's see, the Regional Housing Council met on September 19th, and this was kind of the Hold'em or Fold'em meeting for the four governments participating in this. That's Thurston County and the cities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tumwater all indicated what they could bring to the table toward establishing a homeless resource site on Carpenter Road. I passed along the concerns that council had. Thurston County Thurston County tentatively agreed to serve as the lead entity for this. I think they want to make sure that they're not hanging out there alone, but I think they're, they're gonna do that, which was one of the big hurdles in this process. It was also agreed that we need to go with high-level staffing for this site to make, I think it's 7.25 full-time equivalent positions, so that there's people there 24 hours a day, and the site is well-supervised. Still to be worked out, however, and chief, you'll be interested in this, is an agreement on law enforcement responsibility on this. Since the site is in the county, we agreed to invite Sheriff Snaza to attend our next meeting to discuss law enforcement responsibilities. I believe the county manager and the county commission chair, John Hutchings, are both going to reach out to the sheriff, but that may flow into the task force that you're working on, on that as well. So, I think anything you can do to help convince the sheriff he needs to help out on that would be greatly appreciated.
Of course.
That's, I think, the last big stumbling block on that. And then, Inter-City Transit met on the 18th last week, and we had, this was a joint meeting with the community advisory committee. We had a few business items to get out of the way. We scheduled public hearings for the 2020 budget and the 2020, 2025 strategic plan, and those will both occur on Wednesday, November 20th. We had consultant from Nelson Nygaard, Thomas Whitman, kind of went over, provided a refresher, if you will, and helped lead a conversation about transit planning considerations toward policy framework, and really guided us through some of the challenges and opportunities we'll have as we move forward with implementing the growth that is going to be created by the passage of Proposition 1 last November. There were pitfalls that he talked about without, you know, you don't want to overcommit and then not be able to pay for it because you don't want to have to pull back on a route, things like that. And then we heard from Justin Layton, who's executive director of the Washington State Transit Association, and he provided a briefing on Initiative 976 concerning motor vehicle taxes and fees. And he talked about it from a transit perspective, about the devastating effect it would have on transportation projects. I think we've all seen some numbers recently that it would cost state and local governments billions of dollars if this is rolled back because various, there are various government entities have added on to the license fees within their jurisdiction. Monies that very much support local government, law enforcement is going to suffer from this too if it passes. So, I understand that the cities of Olympia and Tombwater and perhaps Thurston County may be considering resolutions that would oppose this, and so I would like to offer tonight a motion for council's consideration to direct staff to prepare a resolution in opposition to I-976, and then council can make a decision on whether or not to pass that. In the interest of time, I want to bypass city committees because ballots are going to drop in mid-October.
Sure. Can we get a, what would be the next process to do that, the legal process to do that?
Does the council pass?
Yeah. So, can we, can, can you go forward with a, with this, is it, would it be a resolution?
The motion was for council to direct staff to prepare a resolution for council's consideration. So, if council discussed that and voted on that and adopted that, then yeah, I'd look into that and prepare that.
And then, would there be time for public comment? Can you explain that process?
By state law, if you're going to, if the legislative body is going to make a decision on a position on a ballot measure, you have to afford the community opposing or supporting on that issue, and then it'll be up to the legislative body to make a decision after that testimony.
Okay. So, a motion was made, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion?
Is it in order to be making motions during the comment periods?
This was a motion made by Councilmember Cox, and she is, she can, that's her right to make a motion. It's a right for anyone on this council to make a motion to direct staff to do something that will come back before this body. We couldn't, it would be improper to make a motion to pass it right now, but her, the motion was for her to direct staff to prepare it for this council to consider. So, that, that motion is, is a valid motion, and it's been seconded.
So, when is the motion, when, when's the election? November?
November?
8th?
8th.
First Tuesday in November.
What's the latest that staff would have time to prepare such a motion in order for this council? How much time do you need?
Frankly, I need to, I mean, I need to look into that. I wasn't aware that this was going to occur right now, but certainly we update council. I mean, if this motion were to pass, you know, we'd look into that, and we're going to have a work session next week. We could give an update on the status of that.
Yeah, I like to, I like to chew on things a little bit before I vote on them on the fly, so I'll be opposed.
Is there?
Well, this is just preliminary stuff, and there'll be public input and discussion, so I'm comfortable.
Yeah. This is just to get the ball rolling, and if Olympia's a little further along than we are, I'll be glad to request a copy of their resolution and share it with the attorney.
Well, I definitely think this is a important, an important ballot measure that really needs to be examined, not only by this council, but more information needs to be brought forward to the public so they can make a decision on this as well, on the consequences of this as well.
Because it's huge.
And so, for, and for that, I definitely would like to get some more information about this and what, what the cost would be to transit and to other, to other local governments if this was to pass. So, in my opinion, the more information out there, the better. So, you know, I will be supporting this motion as well.
Is there any questions? Um, what?
I would just like to echo that. Anything that brings more information to the people of Lacey to make informed and conscious decisions on, on their ballot is, I'm in favor of doing that.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to direct staff to prepare a resolution against this proposed ballot measure. All in favor?
Did you, in your motion, identify the ballot measure?
Can you?
I-976.
I-976.
Could you open it up?
Up in one statement of what that ballot measure states? Just general, so the public doesn't have to share the number?
In general, the amendment would roll back any add-ons to the state's basic $30 car license tabs.
Car tabs.
It would just wipe out all, all of that, and that's what it would do.
Deputy Mayor?
Just for your information, it has consequences even though we don't have that, but with state funding as well for us, so it indirectly will affect us.
Yeah. I definitely want to hear more about this. I've heard, I've heard some information on this initiative, and I've heard some cities who have gone through a different process than we have, that would be wiped out. For example, the city of Olympia has a councilmatic action that would, that would be wiped out. They would lose all that funding and projects that they have in the key. We, we don't have that situation, but we would be affected by state government funding. And so, I, I'm looking forward to, if this motion passes to hearing, more about this initiative and its consequences. Do we have any idea what the impact financially would be to the city?
If I could provide some. Just real quickly, so in addition to repealing any city council-initiated transportation benefit districts, those will be repealed. It would lower the motor vehicle light duty or light duty truck weight to a $30 tab. It would eliminate the 0.3% Souse tax on vehicle purchases, lower the electric vehicle, snowmobile, commercial trailer fees, and also modify and reduce Souse Transit Motor Vehicle Excise Tax provisions. I believe there's a $2 million loss to the state, and if you look at South Sound Transit, and then city TPDs, we're looking at 4.2 billion.
Yeah. Billion, not million.
Our whole transportation benefit district would go away.
No, that was voted on by the people.
It's voters.
So, but that, you know, there are other, that would be really, yeah, that would be really bad, but I'm looking forward to hearing more about this initiative and the impacts to local government and to the state if it passes, so I think this is very important. Is there any other discussion?
I just reiterate, I'd like to have a little more time to study it before committing staff time. That's all.
So, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
That motion will carry. Thank you.
I spiked my blood pressure there for a second.
Next up is Councilmember Greenstein, and he's lucky enough to be on a family vacation, on a cruise right now, so I hope he's enjoying himself, and we will look forward to him being back next council meeting. I also want to recognize Mark Manger in the back from our planning commission. Thank you, as always, and for all the great work you guys do in the planning commission. Thank you for being here. Next up is Councilmember Hearn.
So, LTAC met today and heard from several applicants who were asked back to the committee to present in person after reviewing all the written applications, and were scheduled to deliberate again next week to determine the LTAC budget for this year, and that's my report tonight.
Great. Thank you, and thank you for the work you do on that committee. Next up is Councilmember Stedman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to first report on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Speaking of vacations, I was actually on one when the committee met. I was down in San Diego watching my nephew graduate from Marine Corps boot camp, and the awesome part about that was he graduated from my company that I graduated from 28 years ago, so that was really something special for us and all my brothers and who are all Marines as well, so I wear this shirt for that. But the Solid Waste Advisory Committee is reviewing the entire solid waste management plan. It's got a lofty, aggressive goal of completing it by the end of this month, which is, it's pretty vigorous, but confident that, I requested a red line draft of, from when Lenny and before Lenny, myself on the committee, before I regot back on the committee, of all the, the plan that we had drafted that was never amended and voted and approved on, and with the, with what the management plan is today. So, we're reviewing it in its entirety. There's some state statutes that we have to comply with just recently from the last election, but confident that we have a very dedicated and passionate solid waste advisory committee that, you know, they, they, they know the impact of the work that they do, and they want to make sure that the Board of County Commissioners are well-informed and that they have a solid waste plan that everybody can be proud of. So, confident that that's going to be, go, without a hitch, and so it's great news. Other than that, Lacey-South Sound Chamber meets at the beginning of the month, so I won't be reporting on that, but we just had our Community Action Council meeting last night, and we passed the operating budget for 2020. It was, the budget increased by $1 million, so the total of $3.2 million, and we took on several, added on to several programs. 250K of that 1 million that was increased was our weatherization program from Clitacat, Clitacat County, and it's really a testament, I'm going to jump forward to the Monarch expansion to hit this point I want to make, is, so the, let me, the Lewis County, I want to make sure I say it right here, Youth Advocacy Center approached the, our Monarch Youth Advocacy Program here with the Community Action Council to become a part of our organization, so they have a better regional approach, and they, they see the wonderful things that are, that Monarchs do in here in our, not just Thurston County, but Lewis County, Mason County, and it just made sense. So, having said that, I wanted to go back to the weatherization contract that we took over and, or bid it on and was successful in doing it in Clitacat, and it's a real testament to the Community Action Council's professionalism and being able to really enhance and stretch the dollar and helping people that wouldn't normally get that help, you know? So, as far as Clitacat County, we're helping residents save precious money that wouldn't, would, could go towards their mortgage or their rent or their card payment or whatever by doing things a little bit better, a little bit tighter, a little bit, you know, just enhancing and stretching that dollar, like I was saying. So, it's a real testament to the Community Action Council on job well done, and those are just two examples. And then, other than that, the, the, we had a, oh, cost of living increase for the, all the staff was 2.5%, I thought that was reasonable. Other than that, any, everything else in this report was not really substantial enough to report on, but, you know, again, Community Action Council is a, is a, is something I take a lot of pride in because of the job and professionalism and what everybody does from CEO down to entry-level position. It's a, it's really a wonderful council to be on.
Well, thank you for that report, and they do amazing work. Next up is Councilmember Zeeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The EDC Board met yesterday. Presentations were given by Representative Weyerhauser and a representative of the Courthouse Project. They gave a presentation as well. The Board discussed amending the bylaws to include a new, new board positions for student representatives from SPSC, St. Martin's University, and Evergreen. These students would be nominated by their schools and serve one-year terms as active board members of the EDC. Members of the Board attended a walkthrough of the new development views on Fifth in Olympia. It was very interesting. The, yeah, just fascinating, the whole thing. I can't wait till the public can actually see everything going on there. The EDC's real estate forum was a sold-out event and took place today. Mayor Ryder, Deputy Mayor Pratt, and myself were in attendance. The slides from the presentation will be made available, and I would hope that the EDC would make those available to the public on their website, or perhaps we could do that as well.
There.
And that is the end of my report.
Great. Thank you.
I had one other thing I forgot to mention. So, Solid Waste Advisory Committee formed a subcommittee to, on the RFP process that the county's going through.
Good.
So, that's, I believe, tomorrow or the next day, and I'm the representative on that, and I'll report on that.
Great. Thank you for that update. Well, we've reached the end of our agenda. Thank you all for being in attendance and for your comments, and we'll have a work session. I'm just trying to look at the calendar. Is it, we have another work session on the 3rd, but will we have a full council meeting on the 10th? So, we'll see you then, and as always, you keep it classy, Lacey, and I'll call this